Is that so everyone understands? Are we just putting this list in the appendix as a record? Because normally under, to have multiple family dwellings allowed in R1 is under a CUP. And the concern is that we're basically allowing these 13 without any consideration or review or whatever at all, making them legally non-conforming where there's a concern of maybe going ahead and still having them go through the CUP process.
What was the last part? Make him, I'm sorry.
The, the list is making them automatically legally non-conforming without having to go through individually a CUP process, which if I had a multiple family dwelling in R1, or wanted to turn a building in R1 into multiple family housing, I would have to go before the Board of Zoning adjustments for CUP. So what, I'm just asking for clarification. What we're doing is we're automatically bypassing the CUP process with these 13 addresses. Is that correct?
As my understanding, this was a new list provided to us by Ms. Blankenship today?
No, this has been built over a long period of time.
So, so in other words, what you're asking is, is if we're more or less giving a blanket CUP to all of these properties, yes?
Go ahead, Ms. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor. You know, my understanding is it's kind of like billboards. These were in existence prior to the adoption of the regulations that established the CUP permits for multifamily regulations. Therefore, because these were in existence prior to that, they are legally non-conforming. We don't have any way, they were there before the code was established. Like billboards that are there before we established our sign ordinance are legally non-conforming signs. So this establishes a list of properties that were there prior to the establishment of the ordinance that requires multifamilies to get a CUP.
The ordinance that was adopted in 2000?
Correct.
Well, the one I'm referring to...
Well, that, that there's somehow not, we're not the ones, I mean, if you want to go in, and what started this was we tried to require somebody to get a CUP, and he says, "No, I was there before you guys got this ordinance." And that's when we discovered that there was several that were not, that were there before the ordinance started to keep us out of a lawsuit. We gave them the legally non-conforming. Now, if there's proof that you have, that you, that the owner can provide, that they were there prior to 2000, then that's what's established in this list. If they can't prove that, and I'm assuming the Planning Commission went through this list somehow, I'm, I don't know. But that's a question that, you know, the Planning Commission would have to take up or verify or clarify with you or the, somebody on this. My, you know, I hate making assumptions, but the Planning Commission went to the work, and there's a lot of, you know, these units here, and I'm assuming they went through the exercise of documenting somehow that these were at least established. Now, if there's more than three units at this one, at Seventeen and a Half Elk Street, well, that makes them a non-conforming, and they would have to go back and get the CUP.
The planning has already gone through?
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, I would like to proceed with caution. Just make sure, just make sure...
Well, this is, I mean...
That's their job.
That's their job. All we can do is, if, if you have a question, and I think that needs to be raised somehow with the building inspector, or point that out somehow. Do you know information that they don't know? Is all I'm saying.
Mr. Raphael, do you have a comment?
No, I've just, it's been around a while, and they've, they've discussed it. They, that's why it's here. They were kind of complaining, I think, that it's so long, we're to get moved along.
I'll check back with these people and see if they have...
They just want to get it on the records.
Absolutely. That's all.
Okay.
I know that several of us at this table have sat on the other side and put a lot of work and effort into similar instances, and I concur that planning has done their job the best that they see fit. One, one of the things, and I get back to a comment several, several meetings ago, I don't know if the first reading, second reading, or third reading is the best time, but I think the first reading would be the best time. I really think that issues like this that come before this table, regardless of whether there's been a public hearing or not, we don't have privy, other than, I guess, on our own effort, which I've, I've been slack on requesting, but since we don't get copies of minutes of all the commission meetings, and I know we can come to City Hall and bug everybody to, to death, but I really feel that when we've got issues this important based on input from the citizenry that are affected in the neighborhoods, and the time spent by the commissions that are putting forth these efforts, and then the city attorney's time to write the ordinance, I would really like to see a representative designated by that commission here to ally some of our concerns where we aren't just making a stab in the dark. Because I've, I've had some concerns voiding me that we're, we're grandfathering illegal apartments, and some of the residents consider that a slap in the face. And I, I truly believe that they need to be identified, just as my esteemed colleague mentioned on signs, that they need to be identified as maybe those places that were in existence under that definition before the code was changed, that there still ought to be some procedure that they have to go through to at least ensure that they're safe. And I think that's some of the citizenry concern, that, that they aren't necessarily safe or up to code, or that there's nothing, all we're doing is taking 13 addresses and making, making them legal, even though they don't conform to the current code, they, they could still, we still need to make sure that the people that rent them, the people that live in the neighborhoods, because with what we've gone through with dry weather, if, if one of those places is operating off of 20 extension cords, because it was maybe a single-family house that's been turned into five apartments or even one, and it starts a fire, and, you know, 2011 or 2012 is going to be another time in Eureka history that we may not want to be a part of.
Mr. Ball.
Plus, there was another issue in regards to business license. Are we going to throw that into this ordinance, or does that need to be done as a separate change?
That would be a separate change.
Okay. Mr. Ball, go ahead.
Done, Mr. Pownell. I appreciate the work that Planning Commission has put into this, and I, and I know it's not eas, their job is not easy. And on the other hand, if, if I don't think, I think I would be remiss in my duty if everything that they came and put on the table, I said, "Yes, yes, yes, yes." That's not my job. My job is to look at what they've done, and sometimes it may not need one more thing. But sometimes residents, citizens, look at this stuff, and they call me, and they say, "Laney, what about this? Laney, maybe you need to look at that." And so if I'm doing even anything close to what I'm supposed to be doing here, I'm going to be looking at these, this, all this stuff. I'm going to be reading all this stuff. I'm going to be trying to understand what all this stuff says, and I'm going to be trying to find out if it's, if it's legal, if it's not legal, if it's conforming, if it's not conforming. I'm going to try to look into the people's concerns and, and try to at least address them and ask questions and, and try to get some answers. So, you know, if the Planning Commission is offended that I don't say, "Yes, yes, yes, rubber stamp, everything that they pass my way," then I don't know how to help them, because this is my job, and I'm trying to do it as well as I can. So that being said, I'm glad we have a few, a little more time to look into this and think about it and talk about it, because I'm not ready to sign off on this right now because I don't have enough information. So no offense, Planning Commission, I know you work hard. So do we.
Mr. Barr.
Well, I don't think it's an issue of saying to Planning Commission. It would be nice to have the chair here to explain how they went around and discovered. I think that would help alleviate some of the concerns that we have. And that's the reason we read the ordinances three times over a period of six weeks. In reference to my esteemed colleague on my left, I think he's confusing two different codes. This, this just makes it definitely a, it is an apartment complex, they do have to conform to building codes. Just because it's a legal non-conforming use does not mean that they get to skate on building codes. They still have to have the right amount of electrical work, they still have to have all the other life safety issues. That's a separate issue altogether. Actually, if anything, this helps enforce that, because now we've got a title on it that's saying, "These are apartments," even though they're non-conforming. They're legally non-conforming in the sense of zoning, not in the sense of building codes. Two separate issues. And so I think that, you know, I'm not, I think if anything, this is going to give our building inspector more leverage to be able to enforce the building code, because now he can go in and say, "You're an apartment complex, even though you're non-conforming, you're still that, and we still have to conform to these rules and regs." So, you know, and, and I'm sure the chairman of the Planning Commission will be here the next time to help us explain the...
Well, I give, Ms. Blankenship asked if she needed to be here tonight, and I told her I don't think it's necessary. So I, I just told her, "Don't show up tonight, go do something else for a change." So she needs to be here for the next, and then well, it's going to be...
Oh, one other question. And I guess this is kind of to the question to the city attorney regarding the business license. I think it says in here that there's an "and other." I mean, I don't, do we really need to say that apartments are businesses, or?
Maybe it is supposed to cover things that weren't listed?
Like apartments.
Like apartments. It could be that, it could be that you want to expand your list at some point to make sure that people understand, but that "and other" is supposed to cover this or other businesses that someone might come up with that don't match one of the titles of our code.
So would we, we wouldn't need a new ordinance?
We don't have to, but if you want to expand the list, anytime you can.
Wouldn't it make it eas, maybe more, wouldn't it clarify it if when we, when "and others" came in, we then added a line to cover those "and others," so we don't get a glob of stuff in the "and others" section?
It would probably be most efficient to do that in more like groups, rather than doing it each individual time.
Yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
The "and others" will cover when there's only one, two, three instances until you get a more developed list of, "We need 10 new types of businesses in town to cover license," or "Five new." There's no magic number, and you could do it anytime, but if you do that, you're paying a great deal of money in publishing costs to change your code, you're going to have to do more costs to the code people to have that developed and put into your code.
Well, when you're talking about costs for that sort of staff, that's a good investment.
Well, that's why there's a catch-all, and if they're not complying with the catch-all, then they're still guilty of not, if they're an "and other" and they're not "and othering" and paying, they're still in violation of the code.
So periodically updating the list, perhaps?
That would be my suggestion for, for more monetary efficiency.
Mr. Pownell.
I think that, that whole business license thing came, came about with the discussion, either information that I ran across from planning, or the chair, or, or somebody, because I also have some notes on the old listing that, you know, that "and other" needs to specify maybe apartment owners, parking lot owners, because I got into an issue discussion-wise that, okay, if it's considered a commercial business, then they should have a business license to be conducting that. So I think, I think that's a, a horse for another, another rodeo. But I, I just want to make certain, and I appreciate my colleagues' esteemed opinion, that as long as, and looking at the note that came with the first list, I believe this came from Ms. Blankenship, that, that the police department and/or the building official cannot enforce the code properly, it gets back to how I hope we could. This will be a step in the right direction to enforce the code once this is done.
Any further? Okay. How many more times we have to read this?
Next time.
It's got a number, it's been read.
Next time.
Done? Okay, all right. No further questions, we'll move on to the next.
We didn't approve it on its first reading, did we?
Okay, all right, that's what I asked.
Move to approve ordinance 2142 on its first reading.
Second. Maiden seconded, approve on second reading?
First. First reading.
First reading, I'm sorry, yeah.
Roll call.
It's called D.
It's roll call, right?
Nor does it.
You have to decide what you're, how you're determining your rule. Because under Robert's rules, it's not required. But under your new rule, you may be each time, or you may only do it on the third reading. You develop the rule.
It was because we weren't able to discuss it, it was just read, and when it was read, it was passed, I think.
You also discussed signing the ordinances.
Okay. So we got a motion on the table. And it's been seconded.
Which way is the vote going to be taken?
On second reading, it's just a, it's not a roll call.
It's first reading. It's first reading. Just approval of the first reading.
You've already done that one.
Is this vote going to be taken?
Can I amend it, connect it by a vocal vote?
Okay.
You have to give a second. A little longer.
What was he saying?
Second order, second order, vocal vote.
Motion to approve it by vocal vote.
I'll, I'll second that, okay, first time.
We already had a motion.
Well, okay.
You draw.
If I recall correctly, when we, when we passed that, we said that we would have roll call vote on resolutions, because those only take one, and on the final vote on ordinances, because that takes three.
Our clerk is so good, you know, four zero is going to be four zero.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Pownell.
And what you said is correct.
Just for clarification, that, that whole thing came about because resolutions in particular could get read, assign a number, and all of a sudden, we've, we've got something, and it, we can't discuss it.
We didn't even talk about it.
And this, we've got three times for, and I concur, we did discuss doing it on roll call on the third vote and putting it in the orders.
So this will be a voice vote on second reading?
Yeah.
First reading.
First reading.
First reading, okay.
Keep trying to get that second.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying, motion is along. It's after nine o'clock, yeah, okay. All right, motion is to voice vote on second reading.
Approve on its first reading.
Dang it, did it again. Okay, all right, I'm going to shut up and just read it back to them, please.
Mr. Pownell, move to approve on its first reading.
Okay.
And...
That's the motion, it's been seconded.
Thank you.
I'll offer no more comments. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Thank you. That's the first reading.
You have to vote.
Are you, you may vote.
Oh, I have to vote, yes.
Okay, I move to take a half hour break. No, just kidding.
Now, next time, next meeting, we'll give it a second.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now let's move on to number two, mid-year budget, date for mid-year budget review. Ms. Ball, Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Okay, we'll move Mr. Pownell. Maiden seconded. Go ahead.
I have a, a grave concern. I realize I'm not a sponsor or co-sponsor on this, but I'm one that is held responsible for our city's monetary status. This is almost the end of August, and a mid-year to me is June. I'm very concerned about, you know, I, I can see delaying operations manual, delaying until we get a new finance director, or delaying software or whatever, but boy, I'll tell you, we're, we're two months at least going on three behind the eight ball to know where we stand monetary-wise. If we set a date, who's going to be presenting this budget review?
Ms. Yvonne's working on July now.
We're going to have to talk about it. Whether we have a finance director or not, we've got to get, we've got to get on top of the ball.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be diligent to keep trying to find somebody to fill that position, but it's, labor pool's slim. Go ahead.
Well, if, if memory serves me right, you just said she's working on July.
Yes.
Normally, we've, by the 18th, we would have had the previous month's report. Is that mid-year review based on the July totally, before we go in and look at where we are financially?
Well, June is the sixth month. The end of June would be the first happening year.
We have the June report.
That's why I'm asking, are we going to be doing the mid-year review based on what we already have? If we are, then there's no reason to delay it any longer.
Agreed.
Okay.
Except for letting her finish up what she...
She told me today she's working on June. She's a little bit behind because we had audits. July, July, I'm sorry.
If we have June, if we have June, we're there.
July could...
Okay. I don't think I have it in here. I'll find out tomorrow.
It could be done on June. It could be done based on June.
It could be.
Okay, then we need to set a date for this.
September 6.
What's your preference, gentlemen?
Go ahead.
Before we set a date, this, this is something that I was kicking around this afternoon as I was looking at all the other things that were going on in town, and it kind of highlights this discussion as well as other issues. There was activities in the park tonight that I feel that people need to support, including us, and I would really, before we just pull a date out of our hat, request that, I'll put the burden on her, would the city clerk at least look at the city calendar based on what CAPC activity? It'd be like us trying to set up a mid-year budget review next Friday night because all of a sudden, here's Volkswagen Weekend type thing. Or, all I'm saying is, let's look at a night where there isn't other activities, and we've got to somehow be able to look at that before we just arbitrarily set meetings.
Well, what?
Unless it's during the day early, that...
Why, why?
Mayor?
Yes.
Or, can I, Ms. Clerk, I, you know, I really respect my esteemed colleague, but we just need to set a date. Do we have anything on Wednesdays? I'm thinking of Wednesday, August 31st.
What time of day?
That's a date of four, our next meeting.
What time of day?
Maybe this year.
Oh, no, no. I would have that one down.
Yeah, he would know that one.
If we did it on a Monday during the day...
Okay, Monday, the 29th.
Monday, the 29th?
And I'm thinking it's, you know, it's probably a two-hour thing, so, minimum.
What time?
10 o'clock, Monday, the 29th.
We're going to be here, the 29th? Okay, good. I know I had that.
Then we should, we'll just verify that, but that'd be a tentative date.
Okay. Vote for me. Okay.
10 o'clock, you say?
All right, Monday, the 29th.
10 o'clock.
Any further discussion on that one?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I think we need to vote on that, do we?
We're in, we're in agreement.
Okay, all right.
Yes, you down with that?
Good? Okay. All right, no further discussion, we'll go to number three, discussion of independent forensic audit, Ms. Ball and Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Maiden seconded, floor's open.
I think we need to move forward with an independent forensic slash investigative audit. We need to find where we can, we need to research what it's going to cost us, how, where we're going to get the money, who we want to have, who we want to do it, and I'm open to discussing all that. Have several reasons why I think we need one, but I'll give somebody else a chance to talk first. If they wish to.
I'd like to know why. What's, what's the concern? Have we got missing monies, misappropriation, and why, why the purpose for a, I don't know what a forensic is, I mean, or independent. You're obviously not comfortable with the state doing this?
The state does a certain kind of audit.
The state would do an investigative audit if we were right and ask the head of the legislative audit. They will come up here if we show them that there is a misappropriation of money, and do an investigative report.
An investigative audit would indeed look deeply into however many years we wanted them to look at. We have issues like year-end balance sheets that didn't, that don't balance. We've had our police department written up on state audits for several years for no accountability. We haven't had a qualified finance director in many years, and as a matter of fact, the finance director we've had admitted to manipulating the...
Be very careful about your comments.
Well, we have this on tape.
Because you're kind of, you're kind of on the edge.
She indeed said that she was, how did she put it? She was disabling things and re-enabling things, or something like that.
I believe she gave an explanation for that.
I know she did.
Yes.
I know she did, but still, I have heard there have been other things going on that may be...
Rumors?
Rumors, indeed, yes. And so I would like to know facts. Um, let me, I'd like to ask this at this point. Can you tell me, Mr. Mayor, if our parking meters that are in these lots right now, do they have a chip that records how much money that goes into them, or any kind of a paper trail that records how much money is going into them?
I don't think I can talk to you about parking meters since there's an active lawsuit with your name on it.
All right. Okay. So, of course, it's a small town, and people talk and this and that, and so, let me pull a number out of the air. Let's say an independent forensic slash investigative audit would cost $50,000. That's about 2% of our budget. If indeed there's noth, if indeed nothing is amiss, there's been no problem, then everybody should, everybody and every department should welcome this to say, "Hey, I've done nothing wrong. I have nothing to hide. You bet. Let's, let's go for it. Let's do it." On the other hand, if there's a lot of people saying, "Oh, let's not, let's not do a forensic audit," that, to me, that raises red flags. Why wouldn't they want something like that? If we can spend $825,000 a year, which is roughly 48% of our budget, on the police department, we could spend 2% of our budget on a forensic audit that would, that would once and for all clear everybody and say, "Hey, nothing, nothing is wrong here. Nothing is wrong here." That would, I would think that would be a comfort. I don't think this is in any way frivolous or, or out of order, or out of the, out of reason. I think it's something that would, for one, whichever way it fell, it would be an enlightening experience, and I think it would be healthy for this town.
Mr. Pownell?
I would ask my colleague from the third ward if they would be willing, the sponsor and co-sponsors, to between now and the next, the meeting we just set up for the mid-year budget review, research what the cost would be, so it could be an item to be looked at, and then make a decision based on that instead of, because I, I've heard the same rumors, but at the same time, you know, if we spend $50,000 for an audit, if that is the figure... if we spend fifty thousand dollars for an audit, if that is the figure and it comes back clean and so be it, everybody sort of be happy, then there's gonna be a group that's gonna say, well, they just blew fifty thousand dollars because we already tried telling them it was, you know, good to go. I think for this table, other than two that have sat here before, number one, we did not get the advantage that we should've had in approving the two thousand and eleven budget at this table instead of just being put under the gun at the last minute by the last council. I think, I think this oughta be a discussion in our mid-year budget review and see if we've even, we're even in a position right now if there's anything that comes out as red flags or money available based on what might be found. It's just a request. It doesn't have to be adhered to, but this is the recommendation.
Which one of your colleagues from the third ward? You have two, or just have one?
I said the sponsor or co-sponsor.
You just said the third word, I'm sorry. Just wanna make sure.
I'd be happy to research it a little bit, find out exactly who does this sort of thing, get an idea of what it would cost to move forward with something like this. I'd be happy to research it.
I make a motion where you, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting what it is.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we postpone this to the mid-year budget review that was set for August twenty-ninth.
Second.
Made and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed. Number four, extension of digital electronic sign moratorium. Ms. Balance, Mr. Pennell?
Move to discuss.
Second.
Made and seconded, floor's open.
We have, everyone has the resolution. Find my copy. So we changed numbers in the file system with one. This has been reviewed by the city attorney and I think the one I have is the one that you sent back. Is that correct?
The one you have now will not do exactly what you're talking about based on your line item tonight on your agenda.
Correct.
Because this, the one you have will actually stop sign permits, not just digital.
And that was, that was the concern whenever it was written because we maybe need to stop all sign permits until this is taken care of. I realized when we, when I was on planning, we went through the sign. This was an error that was made wherever. It's too late to pass blame. But it was basically created during ordinance twenty thirty-seven and twenty twenty-seven in misnumbering, and this is strictly an administrative thing. There is enough items that planning is sending to us that they're, they're basically in the holding pattern, whether it's in the city clerk's office or wherever, that we have proposed hold off until we get this done. And I don't envision this being that much longer because it's basically an administrative clarification in talking with the coding people at municipal league. There's no reason why we couldn't have a one, two, three reading with the emergency clause so we can get back to business. If it's not the fifteenth of October, as we put in here, we let the building official know that the date has been changed and applications can now be accepted. If it needs to be to cover strictly LEDs because we had that in the moratorium before, I don't have a problem with it, but...
Ms. Clerk, you have input, you hit your hand up on some of that.
Yes. There are two separate issues in planning. One is a request of an extension of the digital electronic moratorium. The other thing with the off-premise signs is a completely separate subject. And they really need to not be mixed.
What's your point of order, sir?
That's, that's the point. That's, that's why we don't even need to be discussing any proposed changes, period. That, and like Mr. Weaver said, and if, if this proposed moratorium violates the way it's on the, the agenda, then my apologies and I would move to suspend the rules and change the title of the item. But I think we've got enough issues with signs right now with unenforceable numbers and concerns that if, if this is allowed to cover all signs, we don't open ourselves up for any other bad signs. But it also gives us enough time. We're almost to the point where we're able to bring the changes and the new proposed ordinance to the table in a relatively fast time where we can start working on the other, so we aren't mixing apples with oranges.
Ms. Balance?
I move to have a moratorium on all signs? No?
Actually.
Well, I'll move to have a moratorium on digital electronic signs until January first or until such time as we have an ordinance in place to cover it.
Mr. Pennell?
Point of instruction per moratorium wise, I guess we really should've moved to discuss, assign a number and discuss this ordinance or this resolution.
We're talking about extension of the digital electronic sign moratorium. We're talking about extension of the moratorium.
We've been discussing it, we didn't even move to, to read it and discuss it based on our new rules.
You opened discussion on your line item. She's making a separate motion rather than reading yours.
What was your motion again?
My motion would be to extend our digital electronic sign moratorium until January first or until such time as we have an ordinance in place to cover this issue.
Second.
Okay, there wasn't a previous motion prior to this one, was there?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay.
It was just a discussion.
Motion to extend, extend the extension, is that correct?
Extend the moratorium.
Extend the moratorium.
Digital and electronic signs until January first.
Okay, Mr. Berry seconded it. Any further discussion? Okay, the vote will be on extension on the moratorium until June.
Until January first or until such time as we have an ordinance in place to cover it. The new ordinance in place to cover it.
But, does this need to be just a voice vote?
Almost tantamount to a open-ended or un... You're almost tabling it indefinitely.
No, I'm, I am. I'm trying, I'm trying to say until January first or until we get the, uh, new ordinance and whichever comes first.
You need to add that caveat.
I will admit it.
Our language to do that.
I will admit it to say whichever comes first.
Would you withdraw your original motion restating?
No, no, no.
I thought she did.
Okay.
She did say that.
She did say that.
She did say that?
Well, I didn't say it first, whichever comes first. But that is truly what I intended to say.
Well, that was my second, was whichever comes first.
Okay.
It's gonna be extended.
Let's withdraw, we'll start over again, yes?
Okay.
Okay. I move to extend the moratorium on digital and electronic signs until January first, two thousand and twelve, or until we have the new ordinance in place to cover this, whichever comes first.
Now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion?
Do we need a... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My only question, and I realize I'm being anal about this. There is no moratorium on electronic and digital signs.
Yes, there is.
No, there's not. It expired. That's why I wrote this resolution to, because in the past, there were a lot of moratoriums that got lost in the shuffle and they, in the past, they were done by resolution. If, if we can, I'd like to at least proceed with the proposed resolution and then if there's any discussion of dates or name changes for the moratorium. But consider the fact that we do not have, because we let it expire, not planning, we do not have a moratorium to extend.
Okay, then, I'll withdraw my motion. I'll try one more time.
Do we need, do we need a resolution?
You really should have a written resolution, yes.
Well...
So the motion on the...
I'll, I move to place a moratorium on digital and electronic signs until January first of two thousand and twelve or until the new ordinance is in place. We'll see if they get, if they get an ordinance in place, we won't have to have a moratorium anymore.
But you've got a resolution, is that correct, sir?
And to have, and to have a resolution written up.
Is there an ordinance or a resolution?
That's a resolution.
Okay, I give up, you guys go for it. I quit.
I'll fix the problem.
Thanks.
Go ahead, sir.
I move that we assign a number and read resolution for the proposed moratorium for signage for discussion purposes.
Okay. Motion to assign number two resolution on moratorium on LED signs for discussion, is that correct?
Signs. Signs.
Signs, okay, signs, all-inclusive.
As, as the proposed resolution reads.
I don't, I don't have a copy of it neither. All right, motion's been made. Did you second it?
No.
Okay. Motion's on the floor without a second.
Please repeat the motion. To assign a number. To assign a number and read the resolution for discussion only.
Motion is open.
Read it for discussion purposes only. All my motions, read it for discussion purposes only.
Without the number. Okay.
Without the number?
Motion to read the resolution on...
Who's the second?
Sign moratorium without the number. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded? Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm not comfortable on all the signs. We started out with digital signs. I'm not sure where the emergency is on all signs. I can see...
Hang on a second.
I think the resolution for all signs.
Okay.
And that's what I'm discussing. And I'm saying that I can see signs, little small signs downtown in the historic district. Need a shop coming in. I don't know where, why there's gonna be a six-month moratorium on that little shop or any other. That's not an emergency. The emergency is on digital signs.
Let's step back to what's on the agenda. Number four states an extension of digital electronic sign moratorium. Doesn't discuss any other signs, so y'all can act accordingly. If you wanna act all-inclusive, it has to be in the resolution to be all-inclusive. If not, it reverts back to the digital sign moratorium, which my understanding, there is not one because it has ran out. It's kind of in void right now. Mr. Pennell?
If I'm not mistaken and this was the premise that I wrote it, we're looking, we're looking at less than two months. Today's August eighteenth, August to September, September to October. By the time Mr. Lesswig and I finish up the rewrite, there's enough concern with the sign ordinance enforcement that we've already run into issues on that by the time we do this and then we have three readings for any of the other changes. And, and it's, and it's my premise based on information that I've requested that by putting the resolution to the table, reading it, if you wanna change it to LED electronic signs, if you wanna change it to December thirty-first or whatever, do it now. And that's, that's why, but at least we've got something to start, to start with. If it needs to be LED and electronic, I, you know, there's no, I wouldn't say pride and authorship, but... There was, there was an intent to be able to give us enough time to finish the review and rewrite of the proposed new ordinance. I would appreciate if the clerk would not just sit there and shake her head all the time because I'm trying to discuss something.
Okay, let's go back to business. We have a motion on the table to read the ordinance without a number.
Resolution.
Resolution, without a number. Ms. Balance seconded it. It was in discussion with Mr. Berry. So the motion is still not been voted on yet. So if discussion is over, then we'll need to vote on this.
Correct.
Is motion ceased? I mean, is discussion ceased? If so, we'll vote. On the resolution, does it need to be a roll call vote on the first reading?
There's only one reading.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
No, wait, wait.
Okay.
Resolution.
Resolution, resolution.
And please...
On the roll call. All right, that's what I asked.
We're not approving it.
This is to read for discussion purposes only.
Okay, so it's not a roll call, it's regular vote, voice vote. Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Three to one?
What was your vote?
I haven't voted.
Okay, all right. Two to one?
Yes.
Three to one, so it's up to me. Let's read it. For discussion only. That's the way I understood the ordinance. I mean, the resolution, I got it right by time.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, declaring a moratorium on approval of any new signage as it pertains to Title VII signs of the municipal code. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in conjunction with the Planning Commission, is in the process of correcting administrative errors in Title VII signs. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section One, that a moratorium on the approval of any new signage as it pertains to Title VII of Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby declared to be effective on the reading and passage of this resolution until October fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. Section Two, the building official will be notified in writing by the Office of the Mayor, City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, if the cancellation of this moratorium occurs prior to the above referenced date.
Okay, discussion. Motion to discuss again?
Move to discuss.
Second. Ms. Rafi, have you seconded, okay.
Now, I guess I have two issues. One, I've never seen this resolution until just now. And two, we're going to vote, this council's been so good about not voting on stuff before the public's had a chance to talk about it. It wasn't on the agenda. We're talking about moratorium on digital and electronic signs, not on all signs. I still say I don't see the emergency for a moratorium on all signs. I understand and I think we need one absolutely for the digital electronic signs. I understand that one. I don't understand all the signs, so I cannot support this resolution.
I've not seen it. I never got a copy of it. Did you get one?
I did not get one.
Okay. So...
I don't think I've seen one either.
You haven't seen it either? Okay. Mr. Pennell?
I withdraw my motion as, as the author of the resolution for item five of the agenda.
Okay. So there is no motion, there is no discussion, there is no resolution. It's time to move on to number five.
Excuse me. I'd like to, I'd like to try to make, I'd like to try it once again.
Okay.
I agree.
You know, I...
Okay, we're back.
Keep getting shot down, I don't get a lot of help at all. I'll stick it out there and try once more.
All right, go.
Okay. I move to place a moratorium on digital and electronic signs and LED signs until January first of two thousand and twelve.
I second that.
Is that in order until?
No.
Okay. Made and seconded? Floor's open for discussion. Mr. Pennell?
I don't know. I guess I'm a little dense with the resolution that was read. Those two changes that were just in that motion could've been made in that resolution and we could assign a number and approved it as amended. Now we're gonna have to either not have a resolution or pass a moratorium again without anything other than a voice record of it.
Any further discussion?
But it does discourage me because I thought everybody had a copy of this.
No, sir, we've not seen it. No, sir, we've not seen it. We do not have a copy of it.
Then to keep from violating, as Mr. Second Ward, fellow Rogers' First Ward, Mr. Barry said, I withdraw the, the item from the agenda as written. If somebody wants to address the LED electrical, that's digital, go for it.
And that was your motion, is that correct, Ms. Balance, on the LED electrical?
LED.
Sign moratorium. Is that correct?
Electrical, digital, yes.
All right, it's made and seconded.
Would you like me to amend that to say you should write a-
Mr. Weaver?
I don't necessarily need to write it, but somebody ought to write a resolution because you're, you're, honestly, you're treading on ground that could lead to litigation. It would be best if it was in a written form, directing the pub, or directing the building official not to be issuing-
Would you like to amend my motion? Would you like to amend my-
Mr. Pennell?
You've done moratoriums in the past-
Yes.
Without a resolution.
And we need a resolution to say-
It's not really my suggestion to do that, but it's been done, so you could probably do it. But if someone wants to put one in, you may end up in litigation over it. If you end up in litigation, a resolution is a much firmer record for a court review.
Okay. Mr. Pennell?
Would it satisfy the concerns of the public having enough notice and the review of the city attorney, that the title of the resolution as read be changed to digital electronic signs? And the date that was proposed be changed, I mean, that's the purpose of being able to discuss the resolution. Could those two changes not be made and approved as amended?
The body language of the, of the moratorium would have to be amended to say only digital rather than all signs under the title.
So I'm gonna make this change and this change.
Actually, you'd also have to scrap the middle language here. I'd like to put my eyes on.
Any new-
Any new signage.
Any electronic-
You'd have to change it to your-
Digital slash electronic signage in the title. And you've gotta, it's up to you guys.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna withdraw, if you withdraw your motion, we'll try to get this resolved.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll withdraw, second.
Motion withdrawn, second withdrawn. Back to the resolution with some amendments. Motion to discuss.
Based on what the city attorney said, the, the title of the resolution is moratorium on approval of any new signage, I would propose to make that approval of any digital slash electronic signage in the title, and in Section 1, the same thing, where instead of any new signage, it be changed to read digital slash electronic signage.
Second map.
Oh, you want the date changed to-
Whatever you guys want.
No, whatever. I go along with whatever.